I'm going to go ahead and call this board to order. If you all please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Gracious Father, we take a moment to pause. We come into your presence with humility. We thank you for the blessings of this day. We thank you for waking each one of us up to giving us abilities. Father, I pray for this board today. I pray for the decision that will be forthcoming. I pray for discernment. I pray for wisdom. I pray for your guidance upon each one of us as we have digested material, as we've interviewed, as we've read, as we've studied, as we've thought. We give it to you, Father. We pray for this college, this institution of learning. We pray for its faculty and staff. And Father, we pray a special blessing for our President, Bill Law. We pray for his safety as he leaves us. We pray for his guidance. We pray for his health and that of his family. Guide him and protect him. We pray all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with the river Chief and Trust
Start with comments of the board chair. Welcome. It's an exciting day. It's an exciting time in the history of St. Petersburg College. We're glad that you are here. This board has gone through an arduous process in getting us to this moment. But before we started interviewing, we had a selection committee chaired by Terry Brett. We thank you for being here today, Terry. And that selection process brought us to five extremely well-qualified, very talented candidates. And it was the honor of this board to have personally interviewed each one. Many of you in this room met each one as they made their ways throughout our campuses. You had a chance to speak with them, to get an idea of their thoughts and what they bring to the table. We thank you for your involvement in that process. We hope that you took advantage of all of the opportunities you had throughout this process. We also have read surveys. The interviews were open to the public. The videos were posted. I hope that you had a chance to see each interview. They lasted an hour and a half, and they weren't so grueling on us as I think they might have been on the candidates. But we asked, this entire board, we asked very pointed questions. And I am certain that today we will select the next president that will lead this institution to even greater things. Big shoes to fill. But community colleges are changing. Community colleges are under attack by the legislature. And community colleges, St. Petersburg College is there to meet the immediate needs and the future needs of the community. And so our next president, like the one we have sitting here today, will be one that will take us into the future with great ideas, with freshness. So we're excited. And it's going to be a great day. So I'm going to start with trustee Stonecypher to make his comments, and we'll move on down the line.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this morning and want to thank all of you who are in attendance for what is, like Mr. Foster said, a very big decision in the life of this institution. St. Petersburg College is a beacon in our community. It really is a light that hopefully people can reach for to make their lives just a little bit better and improve upon perhaps what they have. This seemed like a long process going into it, but it really has flown by quickly. I am amazed that we're already in the last day of May, and we're at the end of this process. But as we've already discussed here, the vetting that went into getting to a point where we had five outstanding candidates who were all very well-qualified to be the next leader of St. Petersburg College was thorough. I know the work that was done by both the search committee and the Board of Trustees was extremely thorough and in-depth and took up a lot of time. Time that we love to give and something that we feel is extremely important for the community here. But at the end of the day, we're looking for somebody who can carry on what our mission statement is here at the college. And that is putting students first and focusing on student success and making sure that enriches the community that we live in. And I think this decision goes back to who can best do that, who can best lead us forward with vision, with excitement to get to that end goal, who can roll up their sleeves and get a little dirty when they need to. And this is all about how we can get someone in here who understands that we do put students first, but we also need to balance and attend to the needs of the faculty, the staff, and the administrators here. There are big shoes to fill from Dr. Law leaving us. Dr. Law, you've heard it before from us, but you will be missed here. But hopefully, the person who comes after you has quite an example of the leader that I think we need at this school. So that being said, I know going into this, once we got down to 20 people, and then 10 people, and then five people, my list has shuffled multiple times as to who has been on top. And I hope it has for everyone else, too, as we've thought more and more about this. But thank you for being here.
And real quick, I would be remiss if I didn't say trustee Cole had a death in the family. She is on her way, we think. We will continue with board comments, and then we will open up the floor to public comments. I don't have any cards, so if you want to speak, fill out a card, because we do want to give an opportunity to the public to speak. If she is not here, I'm going to recess. We're going to get a status report, and this decision is too important not to have all of us present for the discussion. Trustee Bellow.
You've been doing this to me the whole time, calling on me out of order and throwing me for a loop. Good morning. I haven't slept. This is, you know, I hire and fire people every day, and I don't think I realized the impact that this was going to have on me personally and the weight of this decision. So I promise you that I have spent a ton of time reading and rereading and that I, too, have the best interest of the college and the students and the faculty and staff in my heart. And thank you for an amazing invocation, because that was a great reminder of, at the end of the day, how this needs to go. So thank you all for throwing me into the things and letting me come back and make the hardest decision of my life in a very short amount of time. But I'm honored to be trusted with this decision, and I appreciate being here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to make other comments later or decide? Oh, okay. I'll save my comments. I think this has been a great process. I think it's been a fair and equitable process. And I haven't slept since Friday reviewing all of the materials. I looked at every video twice to see who answered questions, who didn't answer questions, who avoided questions. And I also went and looked at the over 300 comments that were given back by folks from around this community and this college. This is a tough decision, but that's why we're put here. And I just pray that we do the right thing. You said in your prayer, I wrote it down, wisdom, discernment, and guidance. And I think in our discussions today, that's where we need to be. We need to be wise. We need to have discernment, and we need to pick the person that's going to guide the college in the right direction. So thank you.
Do we have any comments from the public? Any cards? Don't be shy. Okay. Thank you all. That'll make it even harder. Want to come up?
I have no card.
That's okay. Come on up. You can fill out a card after you speak.
Close. Thank you for being here and going through this process.
Wait, hold that thought. We're going to turn on your microphone.
That would be nice.
Thank you. I'm Darlene Westburg. I am vice chairman of the Faculty Senate, and I appreciate all of you being here and going through this process. I would just like to say, I hope all of you will take into account the survey that the faculty filled out. We kind of placed our heart and soul into that survey, and there are lots of comments in it. There were 167.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, yes. Hundred-and-sixty-seven responses out of 374 faculty. So I hope you will take into consideration some of the comments that were put in there. All positive, and we really appreciate all of your work. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before Ms. Westburg sits down, I have a question. Ms. Westburg?
Wait, come on back. We have a question.
I read, I knew that there were 167, because I read just about, I read every one of them, to be honest with you. But I did not get a copy of what the questions were in the survey.
They were just, the question was, pick your top two candidates. And then a box for comments was all the survey started with.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. I can't hear you, though. Is your mic on?
I'm a little under the weather. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the only time in the school's history that we can't hear.
Bill Foster's been saying that since high school. He doesn't want to hear me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's go into a brief recess. We will call trustee Cole and see where she is. Yeah, we're going to be recessed. We're going to go ahead and come back into session. If I can get trustee Gibbons. He's making his way, he's working the room. Yeah, we're going to wait till he sits down.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Take your time. You're good.
Are we voting for a new chair today? Yes!
Trustee Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, my apologies for my delay due to our family circumstances, but I'm glad to be here now. And I did want to say thank you to everybody. Obviously, I joined the board at a very opportune time to participate in this. And special thanks to chairman Brett and the rest of the search committee for all of the hard work that they did in advance of us getting to this process. The past three weeks, I guess, with the individual interviews and the campus visits went so nicely, and I thoroughly enjoyed meeting four of the five candidates, as I was not able to be here last Friday either. So I look forward to our discussion this morning and appreciate all of the candor from which we've received, the comments from the faculty and students and community members who also participated in the interview process. So thank you.
Thank you. So we're at the board discussion time. What I would, a couple of things, just housekeeping, a couple of things I'd like to propose. When we do get down to a vote for the selection of president, depending upon the vote, it could be 5-0, 4-1, 3-2, but it's my understanding that majority carries. So a vote of, when one candidate gets three votes from this board, that will be the, become the next president, that he or she will become the next president. But after that, and this might be a little unorthodox, but I would like, after that, a motion and a vote to confirm that vote, only because I want this body to have an opportunity to be unanimous. I think it sends a very strong message that once this body has selected the president, that we are all in it together. We're all on the same page. So with this board's permission, I would like to do that as well. Before we get into the discussions regarding all presidential finalists, I would like to ask of this board to, and we can all do it at the same time, so there are no surprises. I think there's enough room. But I'd like for this board to go to the whiteboard behind trustee Gibbons and write down their two top candidates. I think that we might have an opportunity to see, I think we all have an idea, and I will say, I have not made up my mind. I have, I can be swayed, I can be argued, and I may speak for others on this body. Again, five strong, strong candidates. But there may be some that are not in our top two, but I'd like to focus on our top two, if that's okay with this board. We good? Any comments on that? Yes, ma'am.
I would prefer some discussion before we do that.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion. I have three top candidates, and I'm struggling. So I would like to talk as a board before we write down two.
Then you're up.
Yes, we are voting for a new chair today. No, I don't want to be up. I mean, I want to have some discussion about the candidates between us, and I want to hear what you guys have to say. I mean, obviously, there's been no conversation. We've all had the same information. We've all heard from the people that were in the interviews and the faculty and the surveys, but I'm struggling. So I don't want to be the one that talks. I want you guys to talk.
Okay. And I promise, I don't mean to put you on the spot. And when I said you're up, I just meant for you to begin the comments and the dialogue. So we will open it up to the board. Any comments? Well, I mean, every single one did a great job. Some did better than others. Some, the videos of their introductory videos kind of gave me an expectation, and then, you know, some were strong on paper, and then they got to the interview and were underwhelming. So I was able to get to at least a top two, but I kind of wrote down comments that I didn't know that I would need. But I thought that Dr. Bonahue from Santa Fe, he was the first one, and he was one I had to go back and look at the video, because he was the first. That was our first interview, and I learned as I went. And I kind of fed on the questions of the board, the direction of the board. And so I kind of evolved. So by the time I got to Beafora, I thought I was a pretty good interviewer. But, you know, in deference to Bonahue, I really had to go back and study him. I thought he was balanced, steady, experienced. Dr. Williams, by far the best interview. She, and it was interesting, because when we started, I think we only got three questions in for Bonahue. And he was kind of outside and went a little long, but I thought he did a great job. And then we got to Dr. Williams, and it was boom, boom. I mean, just extremely well-prepared, obviously knows the college very well. And then the last interview, Beafora, he's fresh, he's local, he's what we would call an external candidate. Thought he did a great job, has good vision. And then Dr. Vidito, who I thought was very polished, very strong on the budget, had some great ideas with the budget. And I kind of went through my, and you've heard this, you know, students, faculty, budget, programs, relationships, vision, and they all had strengths and weaknesses. So I thought, I thought that Dr. Vidito did a great job as well. The, Dr. Henningson, that was kind of an odd interview. We only got three questions out. I'm not sure he answered each one. He was one that, you know, had a strong video, strong on paper, but it was a little underwhelming. And once we finished, it just kind of ended. There was no socialization after that. He left, we left, and there was really nothing. That one kind of left me cold. So that was kind of, that's just a very brief nutshell of the five interviews. But I did narrow it down to two, and I will tell you the names that I will be writing down. Dr. Bonahue and Dr. Williams. Anyone else?
I'll go ahead. I did something similar, and I had to actually take my handwritten notes from all the interviews and translate them into something more manageable on a Word document, because I was having trouble reading my handwriting. And this is four pages of notes on our interviews, and I think I had about 20 pages of notes on the sheets of paper. So I did try to pare it down a little bit so that we don't have to go through everything. But as Mr. Chair said, we, there's many pros and cons with each of these individuals, and some were a lot more obvious than others. I'll start with Dr. Bonahue, who was first. And I also had to re-watch that, because it did seem like it was so long ago. You know, really liked that he said he was going to sell St. Pete College 24/7. He was strong talking about personal touch, face-to-face, getting in the trenches as a leader here. He was solid on talking about building a brand, which actually a lot of these candidates spoke of, and loved his onboarding experience with what he had already done with navigating the college experience. Things that I think really would work well here and kind of continue on with what we're already doing. He seemed a bit, and going to be honest here, because that's why we're here, it seemed a little more rehearsed than some of the other interviews. And it, he was a very deliberate thinker, which is good in many ways, but I think can also be a hindrance in some ways. And another concern I had with him was that it felt like he lacked the understanding of putting deals together and negotiating deals with multiple parties, whether it's county, city, state, business partners, whatever it is. I felt like there was a little bit lacking there. That may be true, that may be not. That's just what I felt. Dr. Vidito, great interview, extremely polished, as you said, Mr. Foster. The focus, obviously, there was workforce, 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 was talked about all the way through. And I think the decision on our end is, do we want to lean that much in that direction or have a little bit more balance, I think, with our vision and what we're doing? And that's a question for this board that I think we have to get our heads around as well. He obviously understands our college very well. And just in conversations over the past year and a half, he has great relationships with a lot of people at St. Petersburg College, and he's well-respected here, which are obvious strong points. There were some instances where I felt like he didn't get to a specific answer on questions all the time. He did say he would be resilient as a president. I think that's something we need. Resiliency is important. We need somebody who can maybe get things wrong or maybe not be understood all the time and continue to move forward with the interests of the college at hand. The only other thing I'll say, he did mention in the first 90 days that he wanted to revise and set a new course for the college. And I think in many ways, we can revise what we're doing and set a course that we think is different. I don't know if we need an absolute new course here, but that's something I also wanted to take into consideration. Dr. Williams, I had the same exact thoughts. I thought by far the best interview. I came into this process with the top five with kind of my early rankings of where I had everyone after reading through their packet. That changed after Dr. Williams' interview. She was extremely passionate, outstanding speaker. She inspires confidence when she speaks, I believe. She had very specific ideas about how we can do things differently, how we can move forward as a college. And it was almost always backed up by facts and data. And of course, she has an unfair advantage with being, having 30 years of experience with St. Petersburg College, but that showed. I like that she did touch on the fact that one of the concerns people would have is that having her step into the president role would bring more of the same and no new ideas. I felt like she made it very clear that she is full of new ideas, and she would be seeking input of others. I really liked her ideas on recruitment, and I loved her thoughts on Phase Two of the Student Success Plan, focusing on retention and classroom experience, making sure the faculty is engaged and involved, and having more of a true collaborative effort towards those goals. The list went on and on of some of the ideas that Dr. Williams had, and was very impressed by the interview overall. And then Dr. Henningson, this is, he was on the top of my list after the packet was read, after the resumes were read. It was definitely the standout interview for opposite reasons. For whatever reason, we just didn't get as deep. The answers were a little longer and sometimes not as detailed. I think he hits it out of the park with his understanding of economics, his understanding of negotiations, his experience that he already has in Tallahassee. But I think the interview as a whole and the vision for our college and his ideas for what we can do at St. Pete College moving forward were lacking a bit. Also, didn't like our conversation on enrollment declines. It seemed like he did not want to press as hard to turn that bus around while the economy was doing well. We still are firm believers that we can close this gap and work on ways to increase enrollment and hopefully increase retention rates as well here. So I would have liked to have seen more of that sort of an attitude. Again, these are very brief summaries of the interviews and thoughts, so that everyone else has a chance to speak. There are many more things written down on each of these great candidates. He's very analytical, which I appreciate, being a numbers guy. But I think almost too much so, where he lacked the ability to paint a vision for our future that didn't just include numbers on a sheet of paper. And then Dr. Beafora, another early favorite of mine. I had, this was, other than the two candidates from St. Pete College, Dr. Beafora was the only other person I had met in the past. He has a ton of university knowledge. I think the main concern I walked away with was, what is his community college knowledge? Does he have a full understanding of what our concerns are, what our struggles are here, and what our hurdles are going forward? Again, he talked a lot about pride and brand, pride in being a Titan, which I really appreciated, using that to help tie all the campuses in together, and also using that as a way to increase alumni participation with giving, as well as... as speaking about us and being advocates for us in the community going forward as they grow older. I thought he had creative ways to deal with budget cuts from USF St. Petersburg. I liked his vision of growing his way out of budget issues. I do think that we need to take into consideration that USF St. Pete was growing while the economy was growing as well. So I think that had some things to do with that. And loved the Compass Program that he helped put in place, which is part of their Student Success Program. He saw a lot of positive results from that. And of course, like the, the fact that he mentored under Dr. Law for a 12-month period as well, which I think gives him a good general understanding of St. Petersburg College. But I found there were more vague answers than specific answers to a lot of questions. And I, even with Dr. Biafora, didn't feel the excitement or overall true vision of where he wanted to take St. Petersburg College. So I too had a list, or kind of my top two narrowed down when we stepped into this room. Dr. Williams being one of them, and right now, Dr. Biafora being the other. So that's, that's where I stand.
Very good. And actually, we don't even, we don't need to go to the whiteboard if we continue this. This trend, I like it. Who's next?
I'm happy to go next. I too went back and had compiled all of my notes after watching videos and didn't make it back to my office last night or this morning to get those, so I am recreating. I apologize, but it was fresh on my mind after that effort. I, I struggled with ranking because I, I knew we were going to be asked to rank, and I really struggled with five very good candidates who all brought something different and unique to the table. And so I kind of stepped back and I said, well, what do I think the best criteria, or what would I look for? What do I want in our president? And how can I do that? And I wrote down a short list that came down to relationships, money, and students. And inclusive in the relationships would be with the community, with the legislature. Inclusive with the students would be both academic success and personal success. And so then I started really thinking about, from a student standpoint, what our expectation was. And I went back to what both Dr. Williams and Dr. Vidito said in reciting Dr. Law's mantra, student success is getting the student to their own finish line. Whatever the student's goal is, you know, what, that's where we need to get them. And that really resonated with me in looking at these candidates, is who is going to have a vision for the college that's really the student's vision? And that's particular to our community and our college? The distinctions and differences between North County and South County, and how to capitalize on those opportunities? We obviously need growth in our student numbers, so where would our AA programs grow versus our baccalaureate programs? And who can make those introductions? So I worked backwards from there. I too was overwhelmed with the credentials and enthusiasm of each of the five candidates. Briefly, I thought Dr. Bonnehue, his interview was engaging. It was almost entertaining from the standpoint of, he, he is certainly a showman, which, which is helpful when you're trying to shake hands and raise money. I thought he lacked some on the budget and finance side that's so crucial now. But he did offer some creative ways with respect to getting private sector to join in those programs, and I thought that was good. With Dr. Vidito, he said he wanted to increase the faculty and increase student success. And both of those is exactly what I think most people would want to do, but I thought that was somewhat of a disconnect with our current financial situation of how, how, how we need to address our solutions within the confines of the budget. I, I did like that he said, for a vision for the college, we need to fill the need. But then he also said we need to create that need. And I looked at that two ways, both positively and negatively. I think we have created a need, we have a great product, and this goes somewhat to what you said, too. And we don't need to shift on a completely different course. I think we just need to refine our course and decide in today's market, what is that Dr. Henningson, I walked away somewhat confused because, because it was a long interview. It seemed longer because of his answers, but I kept going back to how data-driven he was, and I liked that about him. And I like working on metrics, I like working on data. I liked his familiarity with the community college system and his participation in Tallahassee. I liked the different community colleges that he has come from. And so I had to go back and look at his resume and his short video to kind of put together my overall, because I think I had perhaps a better impression or, or a better result for him. My one concern with him was his student focus. He was so administrative and creative with his budget and, and operations that I, I didn't get clear answers, and this could have just been the type of interview that we ended up having with respect to his student focus. Dr. Williams clearly was the most known candidate to most people in the community with Dr. Vidito. And we received, of course, I received much correspondence from community members about her. And so I was pleasantly, I don't want to say surprised, because I had high expectations, but it was almost a relief how well her interview went relative to the comments that I had received in advance of people supporting her. Her knowledge of the community and specifically the communities in which St. Pete College operates, not only the college community, but the community members. Her rankings on the, from the community members were very high of people who thought that she was a good candidate. She was focused on recruitment and provides specific ideas with respect for recruitment. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that the big negative that I have on my plus and minus is certainly the faculty rankings and their concerns with her and how that translates to a successful career. Because we obviously don't want to position anyone for failure. We want to create a successful situation. Dr. Biafora, I watched his interview with the four of you over the weekend, and too was impressed with his vision of pride and that the community and the students need to be prideful of St. Pete College. I, I wasn't sure what to expect after looking at his resume. It seemed so odd that he would want to take this, take a position like this coming from a university. But I thought in his interview, interview, he answered those questions very well in his introduction. I would like to have, I did not rank him higher, I don't think, because of his lack of community college experience specifically. So I had top three, so like you, Trustee Bello, and really, I had Dr. Bonnehue, Dr. Henningson, and Dr. Williams as my top three. And that's where I was. So I appreciate you asking for comments first, because I wasn't ready to go to two yet.
I'm gonna back clean up, you can go.
I guess probably the best thing to do is just go through chronologically like everyone else has. I, I do feel a lot better listening, and I think it's interesting where we've all arrived. And I won't save the suspense, I'll tell you we're on the exact same page. Those are, those are my top three, for a lot of reasons that have already been mentioned, and I'm not sure that I want to go through in as much detail, just because I don't think we need it so much of it is the same. But with Bonnehue, it was our first interview. It was very uncomfortable, first of all, for me. I was surprised by a lot of what I wasn't ready for. I felt like he talked a lot and long, that there was a lot of I in me and not a lot of we. That he didn't seem to be focused on partnerships in the, in the community or the business community at all. He did say, find an employer when we need to grow and we can't. And I liked that. I thought that was smart. Didn't seem focused on, on goals or benchmarks or tracking things, and that really bothered me. He was very focused on international, which I think is exciting, and I know is a part of what we're doing, but I don't think it's our vision or focus moving forward where we're going to grow from. Was very focused on strategic marketing, which I liked, and seemed to really get the social media and video use in, in this new generation of up-and-coming students. I think he is from a very small town with a single campus and probably should not be ready, or could not be ready to lead St. Petersburg College. So those are my comments on, on Dr. Bonnehue. With Vidito, it was difficult because I know him and, because he is SPC and has been here, and trying to be objective in that is not always so easy. I think he did a great job answering on the partnerships question. I was impressed with that. He talked a lot about employers' needs and SPC meeting employers' needs. One of my frustrations was that I, I didn't feel like he answered all of our questions. And even in a couple of cases, we repeated ourselves to try to get that answer. I felt like he was out of touch with the legislate, legislature. And one of the, one of the things that really stuck with me was he said, everybody gets the same treatment regardless, when he was talking about faculty and staff. And, and I completely disagree with that. So I, I was not, I was not a fan departing that interview. Dr. Williams agreed, by far, an amazing interview. She, she did an incredible job, even with your rubber plant tactic. Definitely had a ton of excitement. And again, it's difficult knowing her already and, and liking her as a person and, and having to make a decision like that. She talked a lot about looking for additional revenue streams for the budget concerns, and obviously that's important in the times that we're in. She talked about data a lot and mining it, and seemed to understand the importance of that. And I obviously think that that's incredibly important for our success moving forward. I loved when she said, SPC is the plan, it's not the fallback. And I, I don't think any of us doubted that she was hoping that this would be the one that came through. She talked about being the conveners of economic development, career source, new business, county commissioners, and, and I, I think that is a role that we could be very strong in, and that could help us a lot. I also really, really enjoyed the student-ready college branding idea. I felt like that, again, being a mom of, of three of these college kids, was, was something that I would like to see come to fruition. On the, not negative necessarily, but not my favorite part, I felt like she was negative about our current situation, and that bothered me a little bit. And she talked about our business footprint not being in a good spot, and it left me wondering why she hadn't done something about it before now. And Henningson, on paper, absolutely 100%. Before we walked in these doors, I was like, how do you, how do you not? He's the only one that's been a president. He has, he has been a president, is a president, and I think that that does put him up there, and that is why he's one of my top three. I think some of us were harder on him than we were on others, and I felt like he handled that well. Sometimes we're in those kind of positions when we're leaders, and, and you do have to be able to handle that well, and I, I thought he did a good job with that. Sort of loved and sort of didn't love when he said, when the system is down, we're going to be down, but we don't have to be at the bottom. I liked the part where he said, we don't have to be at the bottom. I don't like the part where he said, just because it's down means we have to be down. He focused a lot on meeting the needs of the employers in the area, which to me does result in student success, because if we're meeting the needs, their end game is to get a job, they're getting a job. Private, private donations funded successful programs while poor programs were shut down. I wrote down in big old underline, highlight, because, you know, again, with the budget time that we're in, somebody that's focused on fundraising and saving and looking at the success of the programs, I think is going to be important moving forward. Three years of declining budgets and no dip in his reserves, I thought was impressive. And he did seem very focused on relationships and on fundraising, and I like that. Dr. Bonnehue, or, I'm sorry, Biafora. I had concerns why, why I did not know him previously, because he is local, and I have gotten probably 10 emails from business leaders since then telling me that he is involved. He does know how important that is and what a difference he's made for them. I think we were all impressed with his pride of being a Titan and the team spirit and give back to your, to your community college rather than where you get your bachelor's degree from. I felt like he was a great orator, he was very articulate, very engaging. I liked the student success focus where he talked about the incoming, first-time-in-college students, but I threw him a little bit, I think, when I asked him about the older kids that come in after already having their AA from a community college. And he, he answered that strong. I think he's very likable. And I think he also handled the difficult questions confidently. He said, we grow, we grow our way out of the budget concerns, and I liked that a lot. And he had a specific plan on how he would do that with new minors and certificates. And I liked his profit sharing for the summer school enrollment, migration to online classes. I thought that was, was smart and strategic. And when he talked about the faculty going to the students, I thought that was cool. I mean, that is definitely a, a serving our students kind of thing, and I thought that was impressive. I think he lacks the relationship with the legislators in, in that process, but there's more than one of them that lacks that, so that's not a deciding factor for me. So as I said, mine are Biafora, Williams, and Henningson. Go ahead, clean up crew.
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
Biafora, Williams, and Henningson.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna take these in the order that you have them on the sheet here, if that's okay. I learned a big lesson the last time we went through this process from my friend Terry Brett, who stood and did what was right at the end of the day in making Dr. Law president of St. Pete College. We couldn't have had better leadership over these past years, and we couldn't have had a better leader. So thank you, number one. But then, you know, I served on this board, I have served on this board, I don't even know how many years. And there have been people that have come across my life who have now have become very instrumental in my life as a result of meeting them on this board. And two of which are Cecil Keen, who since passed, and the building in Midtown is named after him, are, are one of our centers. And Ken Burke, who counted every minority student that graduated as they walked across the stage. I wasn't going to start out with this, but I'll start out with it, that I received a letter from Ken Burke, Darrell Russon, and Renee Flowers, who's a school board member, in the comments that we got back. And I thought that was interesting, that, that all of them would write a letter for the same candidate, coming from different walks of lives. Ken is a definite Clearwater person, and he believes in taking care of Clearwater. I mean, he would tell me all the time, you gotta support me on Clearwater. As I would say, you'd have to support me in St. Pete stuff. So I say that to get to this general point. And the general point is Cecil Keen would often tell me, you don't select a president, you put down the core competencies, and then you back into who's the most qualified to hit the ground running at the time, and that the to hit the ground running at the time and that the college needs that individual." So I broke them down. I did what Mr. Keen taught me to do. Number one, our core constituency is who and our, and our client, students. Number two, the faculty. Number three, the community. Number four, career services. Number five, fundraising and legislative agendas. Number six, budget. Number seven, management of multiple campuses throughout this county that all have different and diverse needs. And number, and finally, I lost count, but finally, our, our last one is bachelor's programs. When I looked at every one of these videos, at every one of these videos, the thing that kept resonating in my mind is, "We don't have time in this economic, in this, in this, in this economic climate related to the legislature to have someone who cannot hit the ground running." So as I evaluated each one of these, these videos and I evaluated each one of these candidates, I then began to look at the comments. I read every comment about every candidate and I really have not slept since Friday. What resonated in my mind was two things. And I'm going to read one of them to you before I tell you what, what I, what I think is, is, is key to this and why this is important. I saved it on my phone because I wanted to be able to read this to you all and I won't read the person's name. Though I went into this session with some doubt about the hiring of someone who has only ever worked at SPC for the past president, for the position of president, they by far the most, were the most engaging. And an impressive candidate that prepared, that was prepared, enthusiastic and though, and thoughtfully responded to each and every question and concern, withheld personal opinions and bias when, when necessary in order to really listen to the faculty, to listen to what the faculty were saying. I appreciated and believe this and it is myself, and it is, in and of myself, demonstrate a characteristic of strong, of a strong leader. Despite minimal faculty experience, I was really convinced that this person understood the challenges and the faculty, challenges that the faculty face in the classroom and that, and wants to work collaboratively to address those issues. Excuse me, I'm a little ill, so. In order to promote student success, I felt this candidate was authentic in the responses and passionate about leading SPC, which had, was something I felt the previous candidates lacked. I believe that this candidate really wants to move SPC forward, increase the presence in the local community and work collaboratively to make this institution great. And is aware and mindful of some of the faculty dissatisfaction and I believe that, that this person will work to increase satisfaction among the entire college community, meeting and listening and truly allowing someone to stand amongst them and other candidates in a way, in, in a way that the previous materials did not. So the previous materials did not communicate this about this individual. Then I went on to read the rest of them and that person had nine pages and seven, seven of those comments throughout the nine pages were all positive. So the next person on the list had four pages and I would say it was probably a 60/40 split on. I will tell you that this is not a time for on-the-job training. I know many of you got down to three or to two candidates. But as I go through this, and I'll go through it very quickly, Dr. Biafora is a very nice man and he is a very good dean at a, at a university. He has no college experience, no budget experience. He also, I asked him about Senate Bill 1720. He talked about developmental education after I corrected him on what the bill was and when it passed. Now be mindful of that. That's number one. But 1720 did a lot of different things and I could ask Dr. Law right now. He could tell me what those things were because he's a community college guy. It, it created a, it was the education accountability program. It also created the K-20 office. It also, it re, it created the, a board of education that oversees the college system, right? These are the foundations of the community college that he didn't know about. And that to me, submitting accountability reports is in that bill. The pathways program is in that bill. These are all things that these colleges have to do on a regular basis. So while I think Dr. Biafora is a very nice man and he's a very qualified academic, in my mind, he is not qualified to be the president of St. Pete College at this time. I mean, and that, that's where I am on that one. Dr. Bonnhue, I thought after, I'm like most of you when I went back and reviewed Dr. Bonnhue's tape. I ended up, he was in my top two. And this is why, I thought that we needed, while he did have some areas where I think he could work on things, especially in terms of local government and government in general and in partnerships, I think he has a general understanding of that. But he was very data-driven in terms of the things that he knew and he's a community college person. He's, he's a community college person. I think he answered the questions that we asked of him. So he ended up being in my top two. Dr. Hennington, I had very high expectations. I, I thought this guy was going to come in and blow us away and I was a little bit underwhelmed. Remember, I want each person on this board to remember that we are in bachelor's programs not because we wanted to be. We were forced into that role. Governor Bush went to the University of Florida and asked them to produce nurses. They said, "Give them a million dollars and they will study and how they can produce nurses." Dr. Carl Cutler went to Jeb Bush and said, "Give me 500,000 and I will produce you nurses." So we respond to this community. So when you talk about bachelor's programs and the council of presidents that you oversee and you have to go with, with how they vote, this man steps outside of that every time. I need a leader of St. Petersburg College. I don't need a leader who's going to follow the other folks across the state. I want somebody who's going to represent this college every single day, is, which is the reason I asked them to sell the college every single day. With these, you know, some of them thought the plant and the straw and all these other things, it wasn't a gimmick. You don't get to decide when you sell the college. You sell the college every waking moment of the day. I call Bill Law sometimes at 11 o'clock at night and he's ready to respond and answer the question. I know in the grocery store, he gets tired of it, going and running into people on a regular basis and he has to defend, stand up and make things right with community people all the time. We don't get it right all the time. That's why we have a president. And that's why we need to have somebody that can hit the ground running. So Dr. Hennington, I was, I was very underwhelmed. I thought that he would do better. Now let me say this. Dr. Stan Vito. Stan did better than I ever thought that he would do as a provost. I agree with your comments, Ms. Cole. I thought that he was very well-prepared. I thought he did an excellent job. It's just some of the, some of the stuff that he talked about in terms of, it was all workforce, it seemed to me, and it wasn't enough about, for him to be here for such a long time, I needed to hear more data and more information about how he would move us forward. And I thought we got stuck at the workforce thing. Very good interview, by the way. I thought he did a very good job. And lastly, Dr. Williams. I'm going to go on the record and say, you know, people call me and they have all these concerns about me knowing Dr. Williams all my life. I'm a businessman. At the end of the day, I don't let anything cloud my judgment. I look at what people do and how they respond and how they react and how they do their job on a daily basis. That's how I evaluate you. That's how I want to be evaluated. I would tell you that if you asked Dr. Williams, and I think Dr. Law would agree with this, and she hates the fact that I make any phone calls to her about anything related to this college because I'm usually not, we don't agree on it. So the impression that I would do something or that I would move someone forward because of a personal relationship is, is, is crazy to me. So you can throw those concerns out the window. What I will tell you is, when I backed into all of these, there were several candidates that came close. But none of them got to the point where I say, "Dr. Williams." And here's what I'm going to tell you finally and I'll be quiet. There are two people that I respect in this state as presidents, one of which is Ava Parker, who's the president down at Palm Beach State. Very strong, good president, served as, set up the university over, the Lakeland Polytechnic University as the COO. Before that, served on the State Board of Education for, for, for the entire state, right, Dr. Law? For the entire state of Florida. So knowing that I respect her, I asked her a question on last evening. I said, "Ava, what do you think of Dr. Williams? Is she prepared to be a president?" And she told me, "She's not prepared. She's beyond prepared to be a president." I'm surprised that she has not been selected as a president yet. And then the final person, of course, you all know who I'm talking about, is Dr. Bill Law. I have the highest respect for. I called him this morning. I said, "We've asked a lot of people, a lot of questions and a lot of things and nobody has thought to ask you what you thought." And his response was, "There has been nobody that he's worked with that has been more prepared to be a president right now that he's ever worked with." Now remember, he's been a president for over 20 years. He's seen him come and he's seen him go. And I respect the fact that when I talked to him this morning, because I had gone through all of this work and I had gone through all these things that I thought was important and this list of things that Mr. Keen told me to back into. When a man who has led this college can tell me that somebody can hit the ground running, I don't have two candidates. I have one. When you look at her educational experience, where, where can, where do you argue with that? And find the faculty voted her low on their survey. They, they would probably vote Dr. Law low today, right? They would vote him low right now, today. Let's just be honest about this. They would rate him low because he has a vision for the entire college, not just for faculty. We're a family. We live together and we die together. And at the end of the day, the president has to do all of these things, not a few, all of them. And when a man that sits in the seat tells me, now listen, I'm no fool. He can evaluate the best of them and it could not work out too. But when a man that sits in the seat tells me that the second chair is ready to go, as you all know, Ms. Cole, in court, you, you make them stand up and you present before the judge. Yes, I do like Dr. Williams as an individual. She has integrity. She knows this community, north, south, east and west. And she is qualified to be president. Why not? We've never had a woman. We've never had a person of color. As far as I can tell, and then you all have to do, do this on your own, but every time I deal with her, she is a very detail-oriented person. She gives back to you in a timely manner and the folks in the community. When I see nine pages of comments and seven negative comments and then the comment that I read you was a faculty member who was, who went into the session and said they were not enthused about going to the session because they had gotten information from other folks on the campus, but when they got there, they had changed their mind. What more do you want for a president? Somebody who can change the minds of their critics. If we all could do that, we'd be better in our own workplaces, right? And so, Mr. Chair, I have to tell you, I came with two names today. I'm only submitting one, Dr. Tanja Williams.
After a round of comments, Trustee Cole, give me your top two. I'm going to put a little mark by them. Trustee Stone cipher.
Williams, Biafora.
Me, Bonnhue, Williams. Trustee Bellow.
Williams and Biafora.
Trustee Givens.
I don't think you need to ask.
You want to, you want to break the tie? I want to narrow it down to two.
I, why? Somebody's got five and they have two.
These aren't in any particular order.
I'm not breaking the tie. I'm fine with my selection.
So we will narrow it down to Bonnhue, Williams, and Biafora. Any more discussion on those candidates? The, I still like the idea of talking about two. But as soon as...
Mr. Chair, do you need me to break the tie so we can move to the next page?
It doesn't matter.
I will, I will, I will vote for Mr. Bonnhue.
Bonnhue, okay. So let's narrow it down to Williams and Bonnhue. Again, clean slate. We've narrowed it down to two. And I'd like to have one more round of comments just focusing on those two. We can kind of pinpoint it and narrow it. Mr. Givens, you had some great remarks. I don't think I could disagree with any of it. I think in the area of, and I agree with this, the legislative and hitting the ground running, that was one of your top priorities. I thought Bonnhue was stronger in that. I didn't sense that Dr. Williams had those relationships in Tallahassee where she would hit the ground running. Strong on students, strong on relationships. I like the transition team idea. Emphasis on students naturally with her background, very strong with that. I did like the recruitment, barber shops, Little League, dedicated team. Her program review was very thoughtful. Where I'm still kind of a holdout and she was very, very honest, but I said, "What's the biggest negative?" I asked her. And, or what would be a perceived negative? And she said, "I might be perceived as stale or with a lack of vision." Now again, she's being honest and that would be a perceived negative, but she said over and over, she talked about tilling the soil, tilling the soil. But, you know, it comes down to, we've got one, what we would call an external candidate, very experienced, and one internal candidate. The, the pros on Bonnhue, strong on faculty, strong on student relationships. I think he was better legislatively. He doesn't have the relationships nearly that Dr. Williams has because he lives in the Gainesville area, but strong relationships with the University of Florida. The, as far as being rehearsed, I think that goes with multiple degrees in English. I don't understand why anyone would major in that. But that's just me. Being an attorney, I should be. I should be stronger in my use of the Queen's English, but I am not. But there, I mean, there are pros and cons with, with all of these. The, but I still, I can be swayed and I'm still on the fence. The, I thought he was balanced. The, um, I thought he was balanced. I thought balance between the meeting the needs of the faculty, meeting the needs of the students. I thought he would bring a freshness. Um, I did like, as, uh, Trustee Stonecipher said, bringing the world, um, to St. Petersburg College, college offerings at employment centers. I thought that was unique. I mean, setting up, I mean, making sure we had classrooms at our employment centers. And that's, that goes to Trustee Gibbons' economic development and, uh, faith-based partnerships he talked about. Heavy on recruitment to STEM programs. Um, the, he had a great answer on achievement gaps and, uh, and wanting graduates to represent the population. And I thought that was kind of unique. We have a diverse population and, uh, really pushing, um, to make sure that our graduates look like the community that we serve. Um, this was interesting. When he talked about return on investment, high cost, low en- high cost versus low enrollment. But our number one mission is meeting the needs of the community, meeting the needs of the student. And so not all of that was gonna be data-driven. Um, he, his, this was him speak, you know, um, he would have a unifying vision. Um, his response to, "What's your greatest strength? Uh, what sets you apart, uh, that this guy speaks our language?" And that would be the language of the students, the language of the faculties. Uh, team building, building the brand. So, um, those are further comments on strictly those two. But I agree, Trustee Gibbons, with, uh, your list of seven or eight criteria. Um, the, um, again, one strong internal that knows this college, this community, uh, knows this budget. Um, and then one strong external that, uh, could bring a unique perspective, uh, a freshness, uh, very strong. So those are my comments strictly on those two. Anyone else?
If we've narrowed it down to those two, there's one clear choice for me because I was not impressed with Bonnhue. So it would be Dr. Williams.
Okay.
Um, yeah. You know, as I look at this over and over and over again, um, had it not been for some of the faculty survey and responses that we received back, Dr. Williams would hands-down be my number-one choice right this second. And so for me, this is boiling down to, do I believe that Dr. Williams, if chosen as president, will take the time to do what she said in her interview she would do, which is reach out to every part of the college and work collaboratively so that people are heard and understood, not always agreed with, um, but at least heard? Um, will she do that? A- and that's part of what my decision revolves around, is, is having faith in the fact that, as president of this college, if she was chosen, she would reach out a- a- and, and speak to everyone and try to pull us together as a team and move us all in the same direction. It's the only way we're gonna be successful as an institution is if we all get on board together and all, all, all walk in the same direction. Um, what I, when I walked into the interviews, Dr. Williams was not number one or number two on my list. She was somewhere past that. Um, she moved up for two specific reasons. One, uh, was her attention to detail and the answers to our questions. She did not need time to think. She knew exactly how she wanted to respond, uh, what her thoughts were. And she was great at communicating that to us. Um, she also had a lot of fresh ideas, which was a huge concern of mine, was will she be stale? Having been here so long, will we hear same, more of the same? She had a ton of fresh ideas in my mind. The other thing, uh, that I think set her apart for me was she didn't have to sell me on St. Petersburg College, even when she had the plant, Devron. Uh, I was, I was more excited to be part of this institution after hearing her speak about it than perhaps I have been in the last few years. Um, she is passionate about St. Petersburg College. Um, that bleeds out of her. Uh, if people in the community and if people she speaks to in Tallahassee and if business partners that she's meeting with don't feel that, there may be something wrong with them, uh, because she is so passionate about this school. Um, so for me, I lean towards Dr. Williams right now. I liked a lot about Dr. Bonnhue. Um, I do still think he lacks some of the things needed to put together more complex deals within the business community and maybe with municipalities. Um, but if Dr. Williams is serious about reaching out to everyone on our, our campuses and within our college, she's, she's my number-one choice.
Okay. Now, I had a judge once say, "When you win the argument, don't say anything else because you might talk me out of it." I'm willing to entertain a motion right now. Unless anyone else wants to speak, uh, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept or make Dr. Tanja Williams president of St., the next president of St. Petersburg College.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Let's do a roll call, and I'll call the roll. Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Stonecipher.
Aye.
Trustee Bellow.
Aye.
Trustee Gibbons.
Aye.
Trustee Foster.
Aye.
It is unanimous. So we do not need a second motion? Um, we have selected the next president. Uh, I'm gonna turn the floor over to our General Counsel, uh, Mr. Lang for instructions.
Mr. Chair, before I get into the next steps that I think are in this process, I would like to personally compliment each and every one of the board members. I think that the wisdom, integrity, thought that they've evidenced today has been fantastic. And so I really am pleased. More than that, it's deja vu for me. Forty years ago, I was the young man on the, the board, the newest appointee. And the vote came down to two-two, and I was the last vote. I know the, the, the uptightness that you all have to go through to make these choices. And I really appreciate it. And I know we all did. You heard the applause. Thank you, thank you. Next step, we now have to place, uh, Dr. Williams under contract. And it's awkward for the five of us to, the five of you to sit and go through that, uh, bargaining process. It's probably impossible for the five of you to do that. And so in the past, what has worked is that the board has designated the chair of the board to lead a, a small group comprised of himself and those members of staff that he would like to have to support him, to negotiate the contract with Dr. Williams in this case, and bring back to you an executed contract, subject to your approval, for the June twentieth meeting.
Do we need a motion?
If I'm still the chair after today, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Motion in a second. All in favor signify, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
Just turn it and on and say aye.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Uh, I will, we've already kind of started, uh, looking at comparable salaries and, and benefits packages and things like that. It will be, uh, certainly within region, with, within reason, within budget. Uh, it will be competitive and indicative of the job that is before Dr. Williams. Um, before I close this meeting, are there any comments from the board?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gibbons.
Um, it's gonna be hard watching Dr. Law leave. He's gonna be a part of my family. Um, and I have to tell you, I struggled with this decision about the presidency 'cause I did have two or three candidates I thought were very strong. But the thing that resonated in my mind is we have such a competent leader who's leaving us. Um, and that, when he told me, what he told me this morning, you know, God put it on my heart that, you know, there is no other candidate. And I just wanna thank you for your strong leadership, your sound leadership. And when people talk about return on investment, Bill, uh, ten, fifteen years from now, we will be looking at the return on our investment because of the, the leadership that you've shown. And I appreciate you and Pat, I appreciate her sharing and your kids sharing you with us. People don't know the stuff that you go through. And we've had some tough talks and some hard talks and some good ones and some bad ones. But through it all, we've maintained our friendship. And I just wanna say thank you to you. Thank you so much for your leadership.
I echo those comments. Um, many of you have heard this. I became mayor the same time he became president. And we kind of, we got some gray hair together. But his commitment to St. Petersburg, and then as I noticed throughout the entire county, is immeasurable. I would be a little more saddened had Dr. Law not been so giddy about retirement. I mean, he's just so excited, it's hard to feel bad for anybody. But, um, yeah, big shoes to fill. But, uh, Dr. Williams has had an incredible mentor, uh, somebody to follow, somebody to emulate, and, and, and really somebody to say, "Okay, the things I did well, keep doing. The things that maybe I didn't then have the vision to move us forward." And I know that Dr. Williams will do that. Um, I know Dr. Law is humble enough to say, um, he didn't bat a thousand. Um, but he came pretty close. He came pretty close. In Major League Baseball, if you hit the ball three times out of ten, you're in the Hall of Fame. Um, I think he did it nine times out of ten and then some. So, um, we've got a lot to be proud of with St. Petersburg College. And I couldn't be happier with this decision today. If there's no other comments, I will adjourn.